And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. Just dive right in. First item is the public comment. If we have any public comments this evening.
I have one.
Sure.
Okay. Something happened yesterday. And I'm just gonna lay it out there and let everybody know. I don't want to hide from the truth. It's hard to hide the truth. And it's gonna catch up with me eventually. It was my birthday yesterday and I turned 70.
You look great.
Therefore, there are cookies back there with... Please help yourselves.
Happy birthday!
We're wondering where them cookies came from.
We have to wait till after the meeting.
Well, thank you, Jerry, for that. Thank you got that off your chest.
Yeah, I did.
All right. Anybody else? Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to our nuisance update. Mr. Tarr and Chief Morrison.
Yeah, I was just gonna update you a little bit on the current state of some of the nuisances. We have currently 17 active court cases on just nuisances alone. We had four resolved last week, which resulted in orders for cleanup. We towed three vehicles on three separate orders last week. And then we have one property to clean up in the southeast. And then we have several other citations that are written but waiting to try to get them served. So that's kinda... And this is separate from whatever Doug has in the 657A. So that's all I got, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Chief Morrison?
I do have a question. When you say ordered for cleanup now, is that give the property owner so much time? Or is that just give you or the city the right to go hire someone right away to clean up?
The judge has been doing it kind of case-by-case situations. The new magistrate has been giving less time than before. So some of them are... We're getting 48 hours, the most seven days, which before it was 15 days. So that's been a good thing for us to court cleanup. So it's been better for us over the last few months.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Tarr.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to report the asbestos abatement is completed at 121st Avenue Northeast. Contact the fire chief last week so we can start getting the paperwork ready to go to the state for that one. So hopefully in the next two, three weeks, he'll get that information back and get that scheduled for a training fire. And then we have 308 Second Avenue Northwest, 416 First Street Southwest, 321 Federal Street South. All three of those, we filed 657A at District Court. Just waiting for the 60 days and the court dates on those. And then 315 First Street Southwest, working with the property owner on that one to get that one. They... I've been given December, first part of December, to hopefully have that one down. So that's a nice chunk that's rolling right along. And then I have five municipals in the process. They've either... I think three for sure have been served and two are waiting to be served. So... And that's on grass weeds or some other nuisance items. And that's what I have.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Tarr?
I was asking you about a property that was condemned and for sale. There's another one on Third Avenue. I think it's 315 Southwest. And I see that's for sale, too. I thought that was condemned. We had to go in and clean it out.
315 Third Avenue Southwest. 319?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, 319. Yeah, it is for sale and it can be for sale. I can't stop that. But it is condemned. And we spoke to real estate agents. Actually, today we spoke to one. And in recent days, I spoke to quite a few explaining that the property is condemned. And anybody that is gonna try to move in there is gonna have to pass an inspection prior to living in it, so...
Thank you.
That's where we're at on that one.
All right. Any other questions? Not hearing any.
Thank you.
Sir. Let's move on to our next item. It's Alexis Greifey and Robin Hanson requesting refuse to the Hampton Fire Station as a host stop for the Wine World... Wine Work... Where a Walk.
Yeah, so I'm Alexis. This is Robin. We're firemen's wives and here on behalf to...
Can I serve sampling?
Of what?
Technically, no.
No?
No alcohol in the city buildings.
Man?
No.
Sorry.
We're asking for those tonight.
So we're... Yeah, so we're asking to do... Be a stop on the Wine Walk this year for Black Friday.
No, there's no alcohol in any buildings.
Yeah, we can't have it here.
Or the sewer plant or fire department or anything.
No exceptions?
No.
They got a beautiful space, so we wanted to show it off.
I found this winery down... Or vineyard... Apple Vineyard. Her dad is a retired fireman and I was asking her about it. He's like, "He would love this. Come to a small-town fire department and do a little wine walk and get our drink out there." But there's alcohol in it.
Yep. Unfortunately, we can't do that.
Well, shoot.
I'll meet you around the corner later.
I was gonna say, the Wine Mart... The Wine Walk is more for like the businesses and stuff.
Right, and we have reached out to a little boutique that was gonna be on site and have her little...
Possibly use their building or something.
She doesn't have a building.
Oh, okay.
It is a local business, but right, she doesn't have a...
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't do it at the fire department, though.
Okay. Even if it was outside? If we had a tent?
Nope.
A little fire pit?
Answers, no. Sorry.
You'd like to try this? Oh, my car's down the road.
We'll look for the pink shirt when we leave.
Look for the pink shirt.
All right. Thank you.
Take a clucky. Take a clucky.
Pairs well with that wine. All right. We'll move on to the next item. We got the request for the poultry and livestock for the Grolkies, Ms. Rodriguez and Sarah Cold. Did you guys have any information that you wanted to share with that us or...
I just wanna confirm that everyone on the council received...
Step up here on the... To the thing so we can hear you.
Yeah.
Everybody online can hear you that way.
Oh, goodie. Okay. I just wanna confirm that everyone on the council received all of our requests on the matter. I don't really have anything extra, I think, to particularly add at this particular moment. Does the council have any questions?
Any input from the council at this point? Well, if not, I've got some input.
Okay.
I just made some notes and these are from our meeting the other day. My first item is that the properties are zoned AT and R1. So that doesn't come into play as far as the zoning for the properties. And the other piece is that the properties are inside the city limits. And we have a city limit for a reason, you know? So we can have our ordinances in here and ordinances out there, so... Some of the things that I've looked at predator-wise, you know? We know the predators are gonna bring... Come in. Coyotes, raccoons, dogs and cats, don't forget them. And then eagles and the hawks. We have eagles and hawks around here and they will... They will pick up a chicken.
I believe that's a risk that we're willing to take.
Yeah. The other item is when you're... The feed and stuff, of course, we need to make sure everything's... Would need to be stored properly to keep the rats and mice down as well. Free-range chickens. That's something that would need to be cooked, probably talked at length about, in my opinion. See what the council thinks. Because if you're free-range, you're at large all the time and you're in violation of the ordinance for livestock or dogs and cats, so... Chickens, in my opinion, and others that I've looked up, can contribute to our blighted properties. If not taken care of properly. I'm not saying you guys wouldn't, but it's just another option. You know, people driving by, they're gonna get the perception, "We got chickens in town," you know, and stuff like that. We need to look at that as well. And then the enforcement for chickens, you know, goes right in, right along with dogs and cats. However, it's gonna increase the need for our law enforcement to get... Be involved possibly. And then there is a significant cost for startup and maintenance, even for a small flock. And I know that's come up before for other animals. You know, we need to make sure that everybody's equitable for something like that. Just some things that had come up, you know, that I thought about. I... I'm not in favor of it, of having chickens in town. We've had them before and we've asked them to leave, you know, because we're in town. Again, city limits, so...
I just have to ask a couple of questions. One, does the rest of the council feel the same about any of the points that were brought up?
I did do quite a bit of research on it as well. And I actually went to a website for people that are considering getting chickens. And what all they would have to do to be good, responsible chicken owners. And I pulled a lot of information from that. And then I also went to other towns and what their zonings were and some of their requirements that we have. So again, like I said at the last time this was brought up, it's not gonna be a yes or no answer right now. I don't think. I mean, if you want a yes answer, that's not gonna happen because we're gonna have to look at our ordinances. We're gonna have to look at codes. We're not equipped for it right now. We just aren't. It's, you know, three people came forward and wanted chickens. And then a fourth one came forward and wanted chickens. And I'm thinking, "Hey, I always wanted chickens. I got a half acre in my backyard. I'm right in the middle of the town." Cedar Rapids, you can have four chickens on a minimum of 6,000 square feet. Well, I got 17,000 square feet in my backyard, so I could have chickens. But I'm right in the middle of town. Is that gonna happen? Are they gonna allow me to do that? You know, and then where do we draw the line? Where does it stop? There's so many things we have to look at and consider. We can't just give a yes answer. You know, like, one person sees that you have chickens. Already, we got four people that want chickens. It's just gonna spiral if we don't have codes and ordinances in place first. Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think this is... You know, this is just a planning session. We're not voting on anything.
No.
But I tried to Google some information yesterday, pros and cons. And I couldn't find anything negative. Maybe I was looking at the wrong site. But I think there is an issue with predator, you know, like feral cats, maybe? I don't know. But if they're in a coop or one of them... What do they call them? Chicken barns or move around inside a fence? I don't see an issue with that, but I'd like to know how many more towns have an ordinance saying they can have chickens? And, you know, find out what kind of issues they're having.
Well, I did just... When I looked at zoning, I came up with Des Moines, they allow six chickens. But they also have a lot of restrictions with that. Ankeny, no chickens. West Des Moines, no chickens. Cedar Rapids, you can have four. Those are the major towns that I came up with. And I looked further at other towns and what I came up with is the average number of chickens allowed overall in the state of Iowa is four to six chickens. So... And as far as negative things, there are because... And I know you guys are good chicken owners. I know you are. I know you're responsible. And so I'm not pointing at you saying, "You can't do this because we know you can't." But there are dangers to chickens. They do carry diseases. They carry salmonella. They carry listeria. The number-one cause of gastroenteritis in humans is Campylobacter. And chickens do carry that. And they don't show symptoms of it. So you don't even know your chicken is ill and it's carrying that. And that's transmitted to humans, either by walking on feces or eating uncleaned eggs and things like that. And I'm not saying that you do that. But we are going to have, just like we have irresponsible dog owners, we're gonna have irresponsible chicken owners as well.
And I understand it. So I'm going to counter with my own arguments. In terms of... To counter first with the point that you've brought up about the health risks that chickens bring. Before I moved to Iowa five years ago, I spent 12 years in emergency and critical care in Fresno, California, the fifth-largest city in California. I also taught for several years veterinary medicine. I am a registered veterinary technician. I hold credentials in emergency and critical care, cardiology, and something called I-131. I've taken numerous classes. I've taught numerous classes about zoonotic diseases. And you're right, chickens do spread a lot of diseases. So do dogs. A lick in the face can transfer you giardia, which is a very pleasant zoonotic disease, gastrointestinal zoonotic protozoan that will cause severe stomach cramps, vomiting, and diarrhea. And that's just our dogs. Leptospirosis, a much more significant and serious disease. I don't know if that was actually brought up when you guys were discussing the dog park. Leptospirosis is a disease that affects your liver and causes permanent liver damage. Again, this is spread by canines. There's also the threat that the common household dog and cat pose to wildlife that are zoonotic as well. That can affect the wildlife here. And so while I understand the concern of what poultry and livestock diseases can bring, the argument can be countered that our common household pets pose just as much risk to us as they... As our chickens do. I don't know if anybody on the council grew up out in the country, have owned chickens, grew up with chickens? I'm not sure. I did. I grew up on a cattle ranch out in California. And I can tell you that, you know, yes, you are going to have feather shed. You're going to have fecal matter dropped. But your pest problem is significantly reduced. Your rodent problem is actually significantly reduced. I don't know if you guys know that, but chickens will kill anything that comes into their coop, find it a threat, including other chickens if they're... If new chickens are brought into a flock. And so, you know, again, as well, I have to think about the mess that my dogs make. I have a 150-pound mastiff. I have to walk out to my yard to one of these probably once or twice a day. I don't think a couple of chickens spreading, you know, walking around and defecating if I'm gonna have them as free range is really the risk that I... You know, is really the hill to die on. I believe that a good country kid has a great immune system. I think that... I think that, you know, having a country lifestyle, growing up doing these kinds of things, I think is a wonderful way for children to grow up. I have three little boys. I would love for them to grow up having chickens and, you know, any... Anything that we can have out there. And I also have to counter the point about, you know, we are coming up here, putting ourselves on the line to request through means that are available to the city council through the code that I brought up last meeting that I attended, for us to have these chickens. When I read that, it seems like a pretty, you know, I mean, with special written permission from the council. Okay, great. I am doing that for 1620 140th Street in Hampton, Iowa. I'm not doing it for everybody. If you would like chickens, Jerry, then I applaud you to write a proposal and present it to your colleagues to have chickens and let them decide. It is a case-by-case scenario. I understand that if one person sees it, everyone's gonna wanna see it, you know, and have it and that kind of mentality. But the same can be done for anything, really. It can be done for anything. I could... I can bring in some brand-new fancy car and someone sees them driving around in town and be like, "I like that." And all of a sudden, some, I don't know, futuristic car that's supposed to come out in 2050 is populating Hampton. I mean, I cannot control what my... What my townsfolk, what my community, what my neighbors do. All I can do is I can come up here. I can speak on my behalf. I can speak on my family's behalf and hope that a little bit of common sense and not just words on paper and black and white make these decisions. That's all I can ask. You know? If you're ever curious, I don't know if anyone's ever driven out by where I live. It's just right around the corner. I live on a county road. And, you know, when you hear the words, "I live in town." "I live in city limits." By definition, legal definition. That's where the big red line draws around my property. But I do not reap any benefits from the city, really. I mean, I'm allowed to come here and I think that's about it. Oh, and I get water because the aquifer's contaminated with chromium, so my well's not usable. But other than that, I don't have a sidewalk. I utilize the sheriff's office more than I do the Hampton Police Department. You know? So, I mean, all I would ask is just for my case, my voice to be heard, my request. And if the council needs more time to make that decision, I am perfectly amenable to that. Absolutely. Take the time that you need. But, you know, I mean, I would just hope that, you know, like I said, that we can operate in some sort of gray area and not just the black and white. Okay? You guys have the power to do that with that code, with that zoning code. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello. So you have received my letter, a request as well. And I'm actually gonna read that code that Sarah was talking about. So it's chapter 5505, livestock. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
"It is unlawful for a person to keep livestock within the city except by written consent of the council or except in compliance with the city's zoning regulations." So, I mean, I just echo what Sarah said. You know, we are taking the time to come here and to request this. You know, and I said, I know in my letter that I had talked about the free range. Is that necessary? No. If you say you can have chickens, but let's not do that, fine. We'll figure that out, okay? But I think, and like I said, what Sarah said is, we're taking the time to do this. So if you... You have the right to make that exclusion to those of us who have presented that case, you can do that. You have the right to do that. For... If you make it for the whole entire city, maybe it's an exclusion of you need to come here and you need to work through it then. Because my guess is you're not gonna get very many people to actually go through these steps. That's my guess.
Right.
And also, I know, Jerry, you had kinda mentioned as far as the startup costs, this and that. That's any animal owner. I mean, that's... That's not even with this, with chickens.
I didn't mention that.
Okay, I thought you did, but anyway.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Oh, you did. Okay. Someone did.
Mayor... Somebody did. That's anybody's choice to have any animals, so that's our choice to do that. But, I mean, you know, there's different ways that you can make this exclusion, whether it's how many chickens, you know, whatever. You know, like I have said in my letter to you guys, you know, we have almost 2.5 acres. Yeah, we are city limits. We have acres. I know the other two people that had presented, they have acres as well. I think it's a different situation. But otherwise, if I didn't, I wouldn't be here. So if you have questions through your decision-making process, I just hope that you reach out to us and talk to us. Obviously, we wanna have this conversation or we wouldn't be here, okay? So just don't say absolutely not and throw it out, please. Just consider us as chicken owners, people that are... We want this or we wouldn't be here. But just don't throw it out. Please have a conversation with us, okay? Thank you.
I had one thing for you on the code.
Okay, yeah.
You said 5505. If you go back to the 5501, that's all the definitions. And that does include... Does include port... 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 Chickens in that.
Okay. I guess I don't have that one specifically.
Yeah, it's the first page of it, yeah.
Okay. When I got mailed the letter, this is just the part that we got, so...
Yeah.
That's why I have that one handy.
There's a definition, it doesn't include chickens, so...
Okay. But again, 5505 says with written consent of the council, so...
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess I would just share where I'm at. I guess for me, I'm fine with going on a case-by-case basis. But I would like to see maybe some guidelines. And one of those would be like the size of the area, maybe one or two acres. That would have to be decided. I would say no roosters. And then I would also like to see the fencing to where they wouldn't be able to get off the property that we approved. So those are maybe the three things that I would like to look at. But otherwise, like I said, I'm fine with like a case-by-case basis.
Just for clarification, when you say, excuse me, the fencing for the property that they're going to be staying on, are you talking about allowing us to have our chickens free range as long as they are contained within our city?
Yeah, that would be my thought, yes.
Okay.
That's a possibility. Nobody's made that decision, yeah.
I would assert you meaning that...
Right. No, I just meant, yeah, just so, like, if we're approving a property, we'd wanna make sure the chickens would stay on that property.
And I'd just like to say that, yes, we are looking at this. We aren't just going black and white. I'm not gonna just say no and toss it out the door. That's why I did my research. That's why I went to the Happy Chicken Coop for guidance, to see what they had to say about chickens and so on and so forth. So I do want you to understand that we're not just saying no to you and sayonara. We are thinking about this. We are talking about it. We are researching it. We are spending a lot of time on it.
Mr. Davy? And I did wanna share one other thing. Some different constituents talked to me about it. And just to share their concerns, it was just mentioned that, just concerns for like predators, maybe coming into town, as well as just the cleanliness. I mean, those are two things that have been mentioned to me.
And it's not necessarily the predators for your chickens either. It's for the neighboring pets that are in the houses in that same neighborhood. You gotta think about that as well. I did get a... A moment. I... I did get one email from somebody that said that they're definitely not for chickens in town. And they said that if they would like... If you do decide to do that, they'd like to bring their horse in, who is currently being kept out of town because of that's the ordinance, so... So that's... We've talked about that, you know, the Pandora's jog. And it's just gonna blossom and it's already started and it hasn't even... We haven't really got it going yet, so...
Can I just...
Will you step at the microphone when you talk, please? We're gonna get you on YouTube.
Okay. To that point, the day after that initial city council meeting, I did have several people who lived with like town, town, town come up and say, "Oh, yeah, chickens, this is great." And I was like, "Yeah, this isn't... Mm-mm. That you are completely off the map." I don't know if you guys have been getting... I don't know if you guys have been getting people talking, yeah, but, I mean, I think that a lot of people misunderstanding or listening to fifty percent of the conversation that we're having here tonight and the conversation that we had two weeks ago. How do I put this delicately for YouTube? Um.
Don't worry about that.
No, you know, I mean, it is not on my shoulders, my neighbor's shoulders, or your shoulders, for people's lack of attention. Lack of attention, folks, to the conversations that we're having within these walls. And I am more than happy to clarify that. I'm sure if people approach you guys, you guys are more than happy to clarify that this is not a free-for-all for Hampton, that every single individual is asking for their individual property. And so, you know, yes, there's going to be, at the initial stage, a little bit of miscommunication, a little bit of a frenzy, I am sure. I cannot in good conscience believe that somebody would be idiotic enough to think that they can bring a horse into the middle of town. My god.
Trust me, we, we, we hear it all.
Yeah. And so, again, um, you know, I mean, I think that once the rules are established, once, um, the kind of the frenzy goes away and people start to understand that this is not a free-for-all for Hampton, yes, I apologize for, you know, any potential future incidences that the city council or the Hampton PD are gonna have to handle because somebody thought that they could have chickens after this conversation. I apologize. Um, but I think that hopefully that ceases over time, when people realize that, no, that's not how this works. So, I apologize that you got such an idiotic email, but, again, I think that, you know, people should pay attention and that not fall on those of us who are trying.
All right. Thank you. Bill, did you have something?
Well, I did. Um, a lot, a lot of things are troubling me about this, and I don't want this to be personal in, in any way, or, or shape or form, because when I think of Jennifer Butch, I think, I have nothing but high, high regards for you and respect for you, and I'm sure Sarah, with her background, I don't know Sarah, but what she's described, I, I know that you at all do a great job of taking care of those chickens and keeping the city happy, but some of my concerns and, what if Jennifer and Butch decide to leave, and somebody irresponsible moves in there, and we've granted that piece of property access for chicken coops? Now, we talked, it talks about in the city code, it says, "or accept in compliance with the city zoning regulations." Well, the city doesn't really have any zoning regulations right now, except for they can't be in the city limits. But we'd have to be looking at things about, um, I should, I should preface this by saying I'm, personally, I don't like the idea of free range in our chicken. I think it adds to the blight of our city. If somebody's driving by out of town looking for a new place to leave, and, and they look and they see chickens running around the yard. It's, to me, it's a bad look. It's a personal bad look when I think about it. But if we were gonna look at regulations, we'd look, we'd have to look at coop location, coop size, secure fencing, ventilation, how's it cleaned, how's it compost, and waste disposal, and who's gonna have to do that? We're gonna have to set, if we, if we allow this, we're gonna have to set up some kind of zoning regulations that this is, somebody's looking after this to make sure the regulations are, are being followed and the chickens are being taken care of, and the waste is being taken care of in a proper manner, and that's gonna fall on our police chief's hand. And personally, I'm, you know, I'm like Jerry, I, I got a half an acre, I'd like some chickens in my backyard. I told my wife, my wife said, she's, she's, she didn't say heck no, she said something else no. She didn't want chickens in our yard. But it's not so much chickens in my yard. I'm looking at my neighbor who sold the farm and we moved into town, and I'm thinking, it's not gonna stop at chickens. It might not be a horse, but I could sure see goats back there, or peacocks, or whatever. And I'm thinking, I don't, I don't know if my neighbors, and I, and I shouldn't say this, 'cause it's not my particular neighbor, but it, I could have a neighbor that isn't responsible, and I'd be stuck looking at this every day, or smelling this every day, or worrying about my dog running over there who's a terrier who's not always controllable. I try to keep him under control, but if I have deer in my backyard, he goes after that deer like nobody's business. If I see a deer on the walk, he doesn't even look twice at it. If I have a squirrel in my backyard, that dog goes nuts and he wants to get that squirrel. If I'm on my walk with that dog and there's a squirrel, he doesn't even look twice at it. And I'm pointing at it, "Look at that squirrel, look at that bunny rabbit." And he just walks and smells and does his business, and he doesn't care. But if it's near his backyard, look out, he's going after that. My wife chased that dog through our backyard and across my neighbor's yard, 'cause he was chasing a deer that started off in my yard, and the only reason she caught up with that dog is because that deer jumped the creek and my dog didn't know what to do. And now he's full of cockerboots, and I'm the one stuck pulling all the cockerboots out of him, 'cause I couldn't control him. I can see that happening with chickens. Um, I don't know, I, I've got a lot of, um, I would love to tell Butch and Jennifer, and even you, Sarah, this is wonderful, go ahead for it, 'cause you look like responsible people, but if you leave, we're gonna get stuck as a city council, trying to tell somebody else, "Well, I don't know if you're responsible." And, and my, I guess another question I have is, we knew that the city code was in place, how, how, I'm, I'm on the, I'm, maybe I'm wrong, I'm of the understanding that you guys already have chickens. How long have we had chickens? Has it been quite a while? Four years? And Sarah, you have chickens? I don't know if you have chickens or not. Do you, do you have chickens at your house?
I do.
Okay, and, so I'm thinking, how come this has been going on for all this time, for four years, and now we're bringing it up now, and not just you guys are bringing it up? Seems, sounds like they're coming out of the woodwork bringing it up. And where do we stop? Jennifer said she has two and a half acres, and you got a huge property, and I think, boy, what a perfect place for chickens. But where do we draw the line? Mine's a half an acre. My neighbor's is a half an acre plus, maybe three quarters of an acre. It's, this thing can get out of control really fast. I guess, I guess I've said my piece, so, that's how I, I want you to know how I feel, but I would love to say yes. And I'm not saying no, but I would like to say yes, just because I, I consider you guys really respectable and, and friends, basically, but.
May I speak to your guys?
Sure.
I know you guys are gonna be sick of me. Um, so to, to, Bill, to, to your points, um, again, I understand, half acre, half acre, half acre, half, you know, I understand, I, I totally understand, you know, how it can get out of control. But again, we're asking a case by case scenario. If your neighbor wants goats or chickens, or, you know, start off with chickens or something, then they need to present something to you guys, have you guys discuss it, and take it on as an individual case by case scenario. That, that is how you, the council, should appropriately handle that. Um, in terms of zoning and, quite frankly, obviously, lack thereof, um, you know, we've had chickens for years. Um, I know that their chickens are, you know, sometimes like to hang out on the front of the road. Um, I've never once smashed one. I drive by their home multiple times a day. I've never seen one pulverized in the street. Um, I have never seen them leave the road. Um, I've never heard the chickens from my property. They do not have roosters, I can confirm that, but I've never heard the chickens from my property. Um, and in terms of the threat of wildlife and that type of thing, I think where we live in particular to the core of Hampton, we already got the wildlife, my friends. I have a raccoon that visits my trash can every night. There's a pack of coyotes that, um, one of my colleagues and I were just talking about this afternoon that lives in the woods, right back there towards the east side of town. Um, we have deer, we have foxes, I have a fox that lives in my pasture currently, and there's another fox family that lives in the pasture right along there. My chickens do live free range, they put themselves up at night. I have to ask the council, how has nobody noticed my chickens before? If it is such a nuisance, it's such a concern, it's such this and that and the other thing, how have my chickens never bothered anybody, had a noise complaint, a smell complaint, a nuisance complaint, or anything like that? Because my chickens stay on their property, my chickens don't harass anybody, I don't have anybody around me that they would possibly pester, um, and they stay contained on their own volition, they stay close to the house. They never wander out to the two-acre pasture, that's too exposed for them. You know, they're gonna stay close to trees and buildings and bushes and things that can keep cover and have a lot of bugs to eat. So, you know, has the council received complaints about our chickens prior to us bringing up this issue?
I do have a question. What prompted you to come to the council now? Did somebody say something to you, like, "You're not supposed to have chickens in town"?
They received letters. I did not.
Say it, there's a letter we're sending out, so somebody saw it.
Not my chickens.
Well, that's, that's fine.
I'm just saying, and I mean, sure, send me a letter, okay? But I just have to say that, um, you know, we've been living peacefully, minding our own business. That's what we've been doing, minding our own business. We haven't caused a disruption, we haven't caused a complaint, a nuisance, or anything like that. And now, now, something that we love, that brings us joy, is being threatened to be taken away. And so, yes, now we are here to defend something that we're passionate about. You know, I, I moved here from California, you know, with the express desire. When I talked to the real estate agent I did, I need a property where I can own livestock. I have had, they have since passed away because I got a little bent over for this, but, um, I had cattle horses that I wanted to bring with me, and that was my only explicit thing. I need a property that I can have livestock. Sure, thing, here's this nice little home on the edge of town, yeah, it's within city limits, but, you know, pay fifty bucks and they'll rezone it for you, no big deal, done. Great, okay. I was here in Hampton for less than twenty-four hours, having to make a decision if I was gonna move my entire life here from California. Twenty-four hours in February, by the way, was awful. And I made it anyway, because I believe that small-town communities, Iowa, this was dreams, I was gonna have the property where I could have. I couldn't have my full-fledged cattle ranch, but I could have a couple horses, chickens, maybe, maybe bottle calf, I don't know. But I thought that I had found my slice of paradise here in Hampton. And now, and then, and I can tell you, I have had a lot of conversations with Mr. Tar about zoning, and I learned a lot about zoning. That's how I found this rule in the book. I've talked to attorneys, um, I have consulted, I have figured out where our rights, boundaries, city rights, that type of thing, all come into play. So, um, but to address, Bill, again, circle back to what you were saying, it's a case by case scenario. I am sorry that you have a breed of dog that its instincts are to hunt and kill, that's just what terriers do. They were meant to be shit dogs to kill rats. That's what they do.
Exactly.
Um, but I would counter, as the dog owner, um, once your dog leaves your prop, how are you in more control of your dog without a fence than I am of my chickens? When my chickens wouldn't probably be over there bothering you, I mean, hypothetically, who knows? I don't know. But, I mean, you have to think of it that way. It would not be, in your, in your hypothetical argument, if your neighbor had chickens and your terrier dog whose ins, drive instinct is to kill, sees chickens across the yard, how are you any less culpable of containing your dog within your fence, within your property without a fence, than your neighbors would be with their chickens staying on their property by instinct? I have to ask that. There are not backyard fences here in Iowa like there are in California. I don't know how people get away with it, especially with the dog laws that we have. I don't know. But I just have to say that, you know, case by case, that's all I ask.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Um, how I read the thing on, on fifty-five oh five, it's unlawful for a person, not an address or a property. So, if you moved, I would expect that we'd go back to zero in that property, and the new owner of that property would then come and petition us for a change. And not, not your property address, but the person. So, I, since they're mentioning person and not property, I'm, I'm assuming, assuming, that, that means that person, if, if that person moves, then a new person would have come in and, and reapply or re, recome to the council. So that's, um, and I've gotten the emails and the messages too. And, you know, you would think that, um, dog ownership would be a, a, uh, something that people would value too. But again, we've, we've only got, of all the people that own dogs in Hampton, we only have eighty of them that are responsible enough to pay eight bucks at City Hall to get them licensed. I, and I can't figure that out. Um, of the three properties and people in this community that I would say, "Yep, that's fine," would be these three that have applied. Because their land is where it is. Uh, it's, it's across the tracks or what the tracks used to be. It's, it's what I call, would call an acreage or, or things like that, and I technically wouldn't have a problem with all, any of the three of you having chickens. If we did have the, um, non-free-range stuff, we can work that out later, but I, I do think possibly that if we redid the code, um, we should specify an, a type of acreage or amount of land or some other stuff. But as far as, as, um, a temporary easement or a temporary adjustment or allowance, um, I, I wouldn't have a problem with all three of them, just based on where they live. They're not downtown. Um, you know, the gal who is here that lives on Highway sixty-five North, I believe she lives next to the church, now that's, now, now again, then we're getting an area where, well, that's more in town, even though the back end of her property faces out of town, that's still more in town than it is here. Um, and again, she can submit her letter as well too, uh, based on that. But of, of the, any properties in this town that I would say it's no big deal to me would be these three properties or any of the properties that are out there. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Davy.
What I'm wondering, you know, you have fifty-five oh five where they have the accept by written consent, so why would they even put that in there? I think they're putting that in there because there are exceptions that could be made. So I think that's important to keep in mind. You know, and it was mentioned, you know, if, if we're gonna have you remove, uh, the chickens because you don't have a license or permission, then we have a whole lot of dogs, dog owners, that are not going by the ordinance, and so I think we should have all of those dogs also removed from town.
At least they're free. Yeah, yeah, I'm.
I, I just do wanna make one comment, and this is a funny one, I'm not coming down hard, but never underestimate people. We've had chickens in the Coonley Apartments. I had just a block down from me, people had a whole brood of chickens in their basement. So never underestimate people, never.
Somebody across the street from me had a mini horse in their house, and I'm in the middle of town.
A horse in their house?
Yeah.
Mini horse.
You can't make this stuff up.
I watched them walk it into their garage, and then they went into the house from there.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, some of the stuff that I looked, looked up, there's, there's something I highlighted here, and I'm, I'm just gonna read it, because it says, "What should, what you should know before bringing, bringing home baby chicks? First, farming, farming livestock is typically regulated at the local, state, and federal levels. So, be sure, be sure, before setting up a chicken coop in your backyard, you will need to first check with your local reg, gate regulations to see if your area permits it, depending on whether the property is owned as residential or agricultural, which we've already determined is not agricultural. You may or may not be able to raise chicken, back green chickens legally." So, I get it, I appreciate that you guys. So, I get it, I appreciate that you guys are here, but four years ago, probably, probably when we should've looked at that, at the chickens, you know?
Can I say something?
You bet, yeah, come on up.
With that being said, that we're not agricultural, um, on all sides of the, we either have cornfields, or a, or a hayfield. So, I mean, we're kinda in the country, so there's a lot of cornfields in city limits. Should that all be removed and put the grass?
Not if, not if it's zoned agricultural.
There's a lot of properties that are--
We have property in town that's zoned agricultural, correct, Doug?
I believe there's a lot of property that is zoned residential that, that there's corn.
And commercial, I think, right?
We, number one, we have, we do have property that has cornfields that are in cropland. So, a lot of it is R1, to be honest, it's single-family residential. The only agricultural piece I believe we have, we used to have that nice zoning map up there, but we don't right now. Um, but I believe it's clear up in the northeast corner of our community is the only place, and that's where, uh, Dr., former Dr. Hanson, Brent Hanson, Brian, there we go, Brian Hanson lived. So, that's the only agriculture piece that we have in town. But there's, you know, a lot of discussion going on here today. I will tell you this, I drove out by the properties myself today, there were chickens over on Donnie Warnicki's, uh, and I'm not saying whose they were, but on Don's ground, there was chickens in his driveway, so, running around his building. Um, but, like I said, it just, it is what it is. I'm not here, you guys are the ones that make this decision and stuff, so, go, go from there. But yeah, the only agriculture is that. And I think a lot of that is things that get potentially grandfathered in, I don't know what have you, but, um, I don't think there was, it's kinda like the horse barn. We had a horse barn issue years ago, right, up on Twelfth Avenue? There was a horse barn, there was horses approved to be there, they were there, uh, for years, they were there, but once they left, this is what the lawyer said, once a year went by, where there was no horses there, they weren't allowed to have those again. So, I mean, it does revert to that, so, um, and we kinda went over that. We've been here a minute now and seen a lot of different things, so. But anyway, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. I think, I mean, you look agricultural, covers a lot of things, right? A garden is agricultural.
Right, but if it's R1, I mean--
Right.
You know, there's a couple houses tore down next to us that they put into cropland--
And I--
--that was R1 prior to.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't talk to that, you know, I mean, we're here talking about chickens--
Right, but you were the one that brought up--
--so we don't wanna drag in, we're already dragging in. Huh? I'm sorry.
You were the one that brought up the agricultural part, so I was speaking to that.
Mayor, I think that we should move all three of these to the meeting on, on Thursday and decide then. I mean, that's, that's actually when the decision's gonna be made, so I, uh--
I don't think we have time for that.
No.
No.
We, we need to decide, uh, if it's a permit process, if there's a fee, the lot size. I, I'm just, I don't want someone on a five thousand square foot lot, or two thousand square foot lot, having chickens.
Then we deny them, when they apply, like these folks have done.
I, I still think, Pat, we need to look at our ordinance, look at our code, and be more specific, get down and be specific, and set up guidelines for us to follow, next time cases are brought up for us. You know, if, if we're gonna do this case by case, we need to have some guidelines to follow. I agree, Barry, we, we just can't--
I have some.
We've gotta have some guidelines.
The more, the more guidelines that you set up, you're getting further, further away from case by case.
Yep.
If you set up, you see what I'm saying? I mean, you're, you're getting away from case by case, the more, I mean, you can do that, we can set up all sorts of parameters.
Well, that's why I wanted to know what other towns were doing, or--
It's all over the board.
It's all over.
It, it, there's, it's all over the board.
But the ones that I looked at, they do have specific guidelines, they say--
Some do.
Well, how are you gonna--
Yes.
If we don't have guidelines, how are you gonna say how many chickens to have?
Well, if you want--
So, if they wanna have fifty chickens, or--
Yeah, so, if you want that, a limit of the number of chickens, you'd have to put that in the ordinance, yeah.
Mr. Davies?
I was gonna say--
In the approval, or in the ordinance?
You'd have to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, if we do take a look at it, like to create an ordinance, then what do we do in the meantime? I don't think it's fair to expect them to remove it. If we're gonna do that, we should give them a temporary, um, permission--
Yeah.
--to do that, and then take a look at the ordinance, and go from there. I don't think we should expect them to remove it, because we're taking a lot of time to study something that by ordinance now, that we can make exceptions for.
Right. Yeah, it's not fair to say, okay, get rid of your chickens, and give us six months, and we come up with something, oh, you should, you can get them back now. Well, that's not fair.
Well, you know, I'm wondering, are we an open Pandora's box?
Oh, hell yeah.
I already opened.
We already opened it.
I mean, you could, coulda, woulda, shoulda--
Yeah.
--for any scenario.
Sure, sure.
By standby, I think we should give them permission to do, to have, you know, by case-by-case basis for these three people, and then if we wanna study it, then we study it, and do it then. But again, we're, we're going by our ordinance, and they're here going by the ordinance, that says we can make exceptions. And of course, we need maybe some guidelines for that, as opposed to putting it in, in ordinance, but again, take it by a case-by-case basis.
I, I don't advocate removing your chickens, taking your babies away from you, I don't advocate that at all, Jim. I'm just saying--
I'm not saying you did.
And I agree with you, a temporary permit, permission, yes, while we sort this out, let's, let's sort it out, let's figure it out, 'cause we're, we're gonna have more coming at us.
Maybe.
We need to have, uh, we've got that fourth person over here, she'll be here, you know, we need to have the guidelines, we, we do, to help us make a, a fair decision for, for everybody.
Right. But that's not what our code says today.
But we're not making a fair decision for everyone, I know what you're saying, but we're gonna take a case-by-case basis, which does not necessarily impact everything else. It might set some precedents for future cases, but it doesn't set precedent for everyone, that's not what we're doing, it's case-by-case basis.
And I'm not saying that.
See, and I--
I thought you just did.
See, and I think we're setting a precedent by doing that. The precedent that's being set is, I violated the statute for a number of years, and now I'm getting permission--
Well, how many dog owners have done that, Bill?
Well, I mean, that's not the point, Jim.
Yes, it is.
No, it has nothing to do with dog owners. We have regulations for zoning, the only problem we have is it's not being enforced. They, we're not enforcing some of those regulations about getting them permitted, and stopping them, and making sure they have their license, and giving them a fine if they don't. In this case, we didn't even know about this, and it was going on for four years. And if we did know about it, it should've been addressed four years ago. And I don't wanna take anybody's chickens away, and I don't, I don't know anything about chickens, and I imagine yours, attached to your little girl chickens as, as I am to my dog. And I'm not asking anybody to get rid of them, and, and, and we're, we're stuck now. We're at, you know, you actually stuck the council now, either to tell you to get rid of those darn chickens right this minute, which we're not gonna do, or give you a permit. So, you took the choice out of our hands at this point. But, but for you to say we're not setting a precedent is completely wrong. We are setting a precedent. If we, if we go to this meeting on Wednesday and we say, yes, you have your approval, we've set the precedent, because we haven't discussed it, we haven't discussed zoning, and like Ron said, maybe too much, too many rules and regulations takes it away from the individual basis. My, my position is, I think whoever wrote this stipulation in there, except, you know, it was either a in-city limits or not in-city limits, and whoever put that amendment in there that said, unless there's a, a exception written by the council, why was that even put in there? Somebody wasn't doing the job on, on a previous council that put that in there. If they didn't want chickens in the council, in the city, they should've said, no chickens in the city. They shouldn't have said, oh, except if you get special permission. 'Cause when you start giving special permissions, you start giving exceptions, and you start giving, you start setting precedences. And, and nothing against the chicken owners, but it's just kinda ticks me off, it's been four years, and we're talking about it today. And, and, and we've got a lot of problems with our zones. If you, I mean, you guys, everybody on this council knows it, it needs to be reviewed, and a lot of them need to be changed, and updated. And, and in my opinion, this is one that has to be updated, these exceptions have gotta be, have gotta go. You're either gonna allow, allow the livestock in your town, or you're not. I guess.
I disagree. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna go back to where I started. City limits are city limits, and there's a reason we have an ordinance inside the, inside the city limits, um, and, and I've, I've got to agree with Bill, you know, I mean, once you, once, where does it stop? Well, if we have a, no, no chickens in the city limits, that's where it stops. If we start making succession, exceptions, then it never stops, ever.
Well, we have sheep we've allowed by exception on the way out to the wellness center, and I didn't see a whole lot of other sheep coming into town for other properties.
Right, but we're not, but we're not talking about that.
I know, we're not talking about sheep, but--
And then we start going, well, he can, and she can, and they can, and they can. Now we're, now it's just, it's balling up, and it's, it's getting out of hand, immediately. I mean, we have, we have a citizens' ordinance for one thing, one other thing, we may have to need to change the ordinance, get that out of there. We don't know. But the other option is, you know, either we say no, we say yes with exceptions, you know, there's, there's too many ways we can go. I mean, so, it's gonna be up to the council to, to decide how they're gonna do that. So, I think we got a lot more, um, work done on this, to do on this. Um, I'm in favor of, of leaving you guys, I mean, I'm not gonna take your chickens away. We're gonna, you know, let's, let's make a reasonable timeframe, what's it gonna take? You know, I don't wanna be talking about this, um, a year, a year from now, still trying to figure out the chickens. I wanna, we wanna, if we're gonna do something about it, we wanna get, get something moving, and make something happen, so.
I don't wanna speak on behalf of my neighbors, but if it's, you know, I mean, I mean, if you need some skin off of this, right? I've been a fee dodger since March, I will gladly pay the fee, whatever you, whatever fee or penalty citation that you issue to a dog owner, when you guys uncover an unregistered, unlicensed dog in city limits, okay, I own that, all right? That's my chunk of flesh. I mean, if that's, if that would appease the council, what you're saying--
Sarah, that's not it, I'm not, I'm not after your past fees. And it, it's just, it's, it's upsetting to me that it's taken this long to get here. It has nothing to do with fees. I, I'm not, I'm not concerned with that in the least, it's, it's just the fact that it took four years to get here. It should've came here before the chickens arrived, for us to make a decision. But now they're here, so we're stuck. But, I don't want you to think I'm after fees, I'm, I'm not.
Okay, I just, that was just an issue that was brought up about, you know, I, like I said, I, I got chickens in March. My, my girls are, I have six, and they're just a few months old, they're not even a full year yet, so I've had my chickens for just a few months. Um, but, you know, I mean, it just was brought up, that this was being done without consequence. And if there's a consequence that needs to be paid in terms of a fee for that, penalty, like I said, I don't wanna speak on behalf of my neighbors or anyone else coming forward, but I would gladly accept a penalty if that's what it takes to--
All right.
--bring it square.
I think at this point, if we're gonna put this on Thursday, basically what we're gonna find out, what we're gonna do is, is what kind of a timeframe are we looking at? That these are guys are, can we give them a time? I don't know what the time is, Doug, that you work with on your letters and stuff. Um, go ahead.
The only thing I wanna say, being a chicken owner, is as far as talking about the timeline, if there's other chickens in town, winter is coming, the people who aren't gonna keep their chickens from the winter, they're going to die off or leave, okay? So, people who are not adequately set up for chickens, they're gonna be gone. So, if that gives you a little bit of grace time, or whatever, just, that's just an FYI.
All right.
Mayor? Yeah. I, I'd kinda like to have a little bit of investigation done, uh, you might call it, which came first, the chicken or the law, and find out when this, this code came into effect. And, um, at some point in time, this had to be approved, but--
Yeah, I don't know for sure, but I'm going to guess decades.
Right. Okay. And that's, that's their feeling decades ago was, it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, that's why they had it in there.
So, what do we wanna do Friday, or Thursday? Do we wanna set a timeframe? Can we give a time, can we give them a timeframe?
Well, whatever you, you can put on, if you put on the agenda to consider the, the requests of these three individuals, uh, the ordinance doesn't allow you to--
Right.
--to say, yes, but, and you're gonna do this, this, and this. Your ordinance says, you're gonna allow them, or you're not. So, with, under the current ordinance, that's your option, it's gonna be yes or no. Now, if you wanna change the ordinance later, that's up to you guys.
Mm-hmm. So, it's not something that's gonna be on the, the agenda Thursday?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, you can--
We can, but, but we got, it's either we all or none.
Yeah, it's yes or no.
And that's not what I'm hearing from the council here.
If you do either one, yes or no, and you wanna review the ordinance later at a, at a workshop, you can just start talking about that, that's fine.
Right.
And we can talk about options.
I'm just trying to protect the, the people that have the chickens right now, you know, while we, 'cause it's, our next workshop is two weeks away, you know, when we're gonna sit down and, and do this again, and go over this. And hopefully, we've got some answers put together by then, um, and then we need to move forward. But what's, go ahead.
Interestingly enough, I volunteer out at the museum, and Sandy Murphy found a book, like, early nineteen hundreds, City Code of Hampton, hard volume. And it, we looked, we tried to look up chickens in that, it had nothing on there, but it dealt with, like, livestock being like four-legged animals, but there was nothing said about, like, poultry or chickens. Just FYI, but I thought that was interesting, but that was early nineteen hundreds.
Can I speak?
So, within the city limits is the fairgrounds? I know there's livestock brought into there, also with chickens? Will that not be allowed anymore?
That would be a conditional use.
Doesn't permit, the fairgrounds property is treated totally different, they have a lot more flexibility than other properties.
I was just curious.
Sound ordinance, and a lot of other things.
All right, so we need to come up with a, what's, what's, Doug, what's, what's worked for, what's workable for you? I mean, they've got a letter, where are we at? What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
I didn't send a letter.
Okay.
I guess, that's something--
Doug?
That's something we're gonna have to come up with, because we're kind of in no-man's land. Everybody else that we've been getting chicken calls to, I know there's one, two, three, four, five letters that went out that have known people with chickens. The other ones that we've dealt with have removed them, so, um, if you do some grace period, I, hopefully it's specific to these individuals, and not so other people can bring chickens in. Right, absolutely.
And if, my biggest fear is if, if, if they have a small yard, in the winter, they're gonna bring them in the house.
Right, oh, there are, they've been in the house. We, and we've removed those. I, two weeks ago, we removed twelve from a property, and it was difficult when that, we removed those because, first of all, it was time-consuming, but then, the vet center doesn't wanna take them, and they charge us for each individual animal, which was gonna be pricey. We at least got somebody out in the county that was willing to take them, and then the owner signed them over to them, so it worked out in the end, but, um, yeah.
If I can add, I've had some as well, whereas chief wasn't involved, and I gave people, I said, you got twenty-four hours to get rid of them. I came back the next day, and they all got rid of them. We have had the water department, um, chased before in the basement, but--
And this has been going on for years.
This has been going on for a long time.
The police, Doug, have been-- The police, Doug, have been instructing, giving notices to chicken owners for years.
Yeah, every time one comes up, we've went after them right away. I'm embarrassed that we haven't seen your chickens for four years, but, yeah.
Good.
So, but yes.
And again, this is a funny one. It wasn't a nuisance, but somebody told me they saw a couple of your chickens shopping at Dollar Fresh.
They also have feed, they poach them. We've also, though, had, had businesses, you know, bringing in hogs right through the back door into a clothing store to butcher. So, I mean, things of that nature. I mean, it's all across, we live in rural Iowa, guys, and, and so hopefully everybody can bring the temperature down on all sides, hopefully, and work through this. And I'm sure we can. You guys are great. But what I'm getting at is, yeah, we're still in rural, rural Iowa. So, anyway. We'll do, Mark and I'll do whatever you guys want.
I don't know that we need to make a timeline, so to speak. They've received the letters. We don't act on, act on the letters right away. Two weeks, we've talked about.
We weren't acting on the ones that decided to follow through with coming here on the consent. Everybody else was already told they've gotta be gone. If they didn't come here, they already have to be gone.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you as the police chief, you have the discretion to stop a, a notice process at any point. Is that correct?
Right.
So, if, I mean, if someone, you know, speeds and they write a ticket and, and you learn more information, you have the ability to
Correct.
To correct that or change that. So, just because you're terminating the process of their notice, doesn't mean that anybody else's process, you know, is terminated.
Right.
Correct. Correct. So we're just basically the, the three that have contacted us.
And that's all we're dealing with right now.
And that's the ones we're working on right now.
The fourth one doesn't have chickens.
Right.
I know a fifth one's coming, but, yeah.
Yeah. So at this point, so we.
I, I don't understand how we're gonna do this. If they got a smaller lot, are they gonna have a chicken barn, fenced-in yard, chicken coop?
I don't know. That's for, that's for the workshop.
How are you gonna handle that?
I don't know.
So for Thursday, it's just these three requests, these three properties?
Yep.
And it's either a yes or no. And then if you wanna, you know, continue with the ordinance the way it is, you don't change it. If you wanna talk about putting parameters on, then that has to be by ordinance.
Yep.
By changing the ordinance.
Nothing's gonna happen on Thursday night. Action wise.
Question then, if we give the approval yes on Thursday and then we change the ordinance down the road, will they have to comply? Will it be retroactive?
Well, I think.
For example, limiting the number of chickens.
So that's, that is a legal question. I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know.
So we really don't know. If we give the yes here, they can do pretty much what they want. And then if we ride, fine-tune the ordinance, everybody else doesn't get that same freedom, correct? Am I?
Yeah, unless you.
I was just gonna say, if, unless you wrote in the ordinance, in my, my opinion, let you grandfather in those that you've already approved. That would maybe be a question for a lawyer. So you could deal with it in the ordinance for those that you had given approval to in the past. And let's say then they moved, then that would be it for that property.
Right.
In my opinion.
But if they're grand, if they've gotten this permission and we write the new ordinance and they're grandfathered in, and we have two dozen chickens and we're telling people now that they could only have four to six chickens, what happens here with these two dozen chickens? Do we go back and tell these people that we've grandfathered in, that they gotta get rid of the two dozen chickens, they can only have four to six? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, probably whatever was approved when they were given permission to have it, they'd have to probably stay with that. If I understand your question.
There isn't anything.
There is none.
There isn't anything.
There is no order.
Well, for, well, okay, well.
As far as number of chickens and stuff like that, yeah.
Are you saying they have nine chickens, so they get to keep their nine and you have, I don't know how many, six? And that's what I was gonna say, is that I don't know about my other neighbors, but I know that I put in there, in my proposal, that at least a minimum of six or more. So I don't, again, if we're gonna take this by a case-by-case scenario, I mean, I laid it out that six minimum. And that's the girls I have. They produce just enough eggs for a family of five. I can't imagine having more chickens than six. That would be terrible. So, I mean, if it's a case-by-case, if it needs to be grandfathered in, if we need to be set at six because that's what I put in my proposal to the council, I think that that's completely reasonable and that meets in the middle. A nice compromise, personally.
We have eight and we probably would not go more than that. Like, don't get nine. I thought, if we have one, then I thought we would probably get nine. But, we wouldn't wanna go more than that. So, two dozen chickens is, is no way. That's a lot. So, just.
And so that, that's what I'm saying, Jim. So if we write in the.
I didn't mean to get into a discussion on number of chickens. I'm just using the example that we could work into a grandfather. So, and that's all the further it needs to go for tonight.
And that's, that was my question that I was asking, though. That was the question I was asking, though. Would it be retroactive then? Would we then go back and?
Well, no, that's a good question. Save it for the, for the future discussion.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. I want a cookie.
You don't get a cookie tonight.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that we wanna make a decision this Thursday. I don't know, think we have the information to do that. I think if he can stop, I mean, we gave him the letters. We're not gonna do anything with them three letters for you guys right now because the process is kind of on hold. We're gonna talk about it on a week from, two weeks from tomorrow, or last, yesterday. And, and then we can take action at that next one if, if, if we deem it, deem it appropriate. Does that make sense to anybody? Or am I just talking?
So we're not gonna bring anything to a vote Thursday, correct?
I don't think we can.
No action? Okay.
Because if we do, we're gonna, we're just gonna open up more stuff. And then we gotta do this, and we gotta do that, and we gotta do that. We gotta, we gotta have a conversation and get it, where we wanna, where we're gonna land before we, before we vote on it, I think. Does that make sense to anybody? Am I, okay?
It does.
I'm gonna say thank you guys for, for showing up today and thanks for the conversation. I mean, we need that. And that's what's gonna get things where we want it to be. So, we appreciate you.
It was a healthy conversation.
It is, it is. That's what we need. That's exactly what we need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Right now, we're gonna move on to our next item. We still got two more items on our agenda. So first is the concession, concept of expansion of the community bike lanes. There's information on that. Mr. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. There's not much information on this. More along the lines of, I wanted to bring this up at a workshop briefly to just start getting you guys to maybe think about something as far as the expansion of our, our bike system because it was brought up by Councilman Holmstrom. We had a nice discussion the other day about that. If you guys recall, when we finished our trail, the trail project, gosh, what was that, 2011 roughly, somewhere in there? We, there was some thoughts once upon a time about bringing the trail to the south, you know? And one of the concerns Bill brought up was the children and the kids in the south, half of the community not being able to access by trail, the, the trail system, the parks, the aquatic center, library, or, well, the libraries on south side, but a number of things on the south side of Highway 3. And so we started looking into some different things of that nature. But I think Ron brought up a good point. We had a discussion about it. We will probably have a planning session after the election like we do on these election years that's coming up. But I would like you guys to maybe just start thinking, talking amongst yourselves or your constituents, see what their thoughts are about a need for that in our community, just to see what that might look like. And so, off topic just a little bit, I'm also gonna hit you up about your ideas for some street stuff for next year, too. But I mean, along those lines, that's kinda along the lines with this, deal with expanding the trail. We, we had a nice spur that we added up on federal. Of course, all that stuff comes with a cost and different things of that nature. But before we dig in too tight to all that, just wanna make sure you guys are collectively all on the same page when we start looking at what we're gonna do moving forward if we're gonna do that. So, just wanted to get your minds ticking a little bit on that and see, start thinking about it a little bit. If you have any input on that or what have you, just have it prepared for the planning session coming up. And when does that, Ron, probably?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, roughly.
I don't know. It's after the election, after new people take office. So it's gonna, that will be, you know.
Right, next spring, probably.
February, March. But, do you wanna go through these photos you took?
Yeah, we can go through real quick because one of the things and the big concerns was is the crossings at the highways. Well, we have one highway crossing that I'm aware of on the main trail up by Casey's. We took a photo. Just to give you an idea of the signage, what that would look like if we were to actually cross Highway 3, where we would cross. There's a lot of different thought processes. You know, we'd had some conversations in years past where there used to be the other railroad corridor that come through town. Hey, we'll just tie onto that and run. Well, easier said than done, believe me. I think County Conservation had looked into that a little bit. And it wasn't a simple, why, I don't know. I'm assuming it's a different railroad that they're dealing with that, that got rid of that. So then that went into some private ownership. So.
Trying to bring it up here.
Yeah. There's just a lot of things for consideration and doing things the, the right way, of course, and the safest way possible. But I do, has anyone seen the new signage and the new lines painted up on North Federal going to Harriman Park? I think that's being utilized. I think Mary lives up there. He's given me some feedback on that. There are folks utilizing it. There we go. It's not zoomed in great, but you know, there's typically a stop sign on the trail side. It's not for the cars to stop. That's for the bicyclists and the pedestrians, stop, look, utilize it as a, as a crosswalk. But there, when I, when we get to that, you know, the signs cost money. All this stuff that we're talking about's gonna cost a few bucks. And how are we gonna do that? Are we gonna look at a grant? Are we going to? There's just a whole plethora of things to start thinking about. And that's kinda where I was at today is I was just hoping you guys would, you know, start thinking about that, if that's something we want to undertake or not. And I think the planning session this next spring probably be great, but, you know, we just need to start thinking about it.
That's just a picture of the sign here illustrating the signs.
Yeah, yeah. And that's on the highway side. And that's Highway 3.
65.
Or, excuse me, yeah, 65 North up there by Scheidemann's and, and Casey's, the new church. But, you know, as far as I know, we haven't had any accidents up there at all. So, I mean, I think that's a positive. I think it's well-signed. And if we were to look at adding some of those.
Okay, I, I just have a quick question. So, like the other sign on, that you showed, like on 65. Okay, are you saying we should do something in addition to that there? Or are you saying we should take a look at other intersections and possibly put signage on those?
I guess what we're kinda, what was brought up was somehow to bring the bicyclists from the south side of Highway 3 all the way to, you know, to the north side. So possibly two crossings, possibly one. Where would that be? What's that look like? And then another thought, one of the thoughts I had because we were starting to look at what the wider streets, to add some of those bike lanes possibly with paint, would be like taking high, or taking 3rd Avenue in the south and running it all the way from 8th Street Southeast all the way up to 7th Street Southwest on 3rd Avenue. Well, we need to cross Highway 65 South, similar to where we're doing here, if that were the case. That way, I guess just trying to connect all four quadrants would probably, in my opinion, be a good idea some way. I don't know what that is just yet, but I just wanted you guys to start thinking, you know, and, and envisioning if this is something that you're thinking we want to undertake here in the near future.
Sounds like a great discussion after the first of the year.
Well, it does. And that's why I'm, I'm trying to make this brief, but we had a couple pictures and, you know, I know Bill's got some thoughts, you know what I mean? And, and I've, I've had some old maps that I can dig out from when we finished the last time because we never did actually finish all the spurs in town, you know? So maybe it's something we need to start looking at.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up, Doug. This, I've been thinking about this for a long time because we have so many children on the south side of Highway 3 that don't have access to any park in the city of Hampton without crossing that busy street of Highway 3. And we got the two, two separate quadrants. And there's many options. Of course, the most obvious is to put up some stoplights, but our traffic on Highway 3 doesn't justify that traffic or the expenditure for a signal to actually stop the traffic. And to bring all the kids to our one stoplight on the corner of 65 and 3, that's too busy to throw all those kids there. Then you have to educate them to go to that one spot. And that, that's a job in itself. But we need to do something for those kids. And if it's, if we can't build more parks on the south side, we need to figure a safe way to get those kids on the north side of town. And once we get them access to the trail system, they can access every park that we have. They can, they can, all the way from Beets Lake to the Wellness Center and all the parks in between, but there's nothing for them on the south side of town. They only, they only had the one option, that was behind the sheriff's office where they used to have the playground back there when that used to be a school, and that's gone. And now I guess they could run over to the playground on the elementary school, but that's it. You know, and, and a new park's probably out of the picture. So we need to figure out how to get them safely across that Highway 3. That, that's, that's the key. The safety is the key thing. And, and we need to improve this one a little bit, too. I think there's ways to do it without a lot of expense. I mean, this is great what we've done, but they're still going, cars are still going pretty fast across that intersection.
They are, but we've had no accidents and we're no good.
And knocking on wood, if that's wood, I don't know if it's wood.
Right. Yeah, I, yeah.
It's, it's pure, it's, you're, it's the grace of God, nobody's been hit there yet.
The, the engineers put that together, not the city. But, yeah.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, 100 years ago, when I was in grade school, there used to be these little lights that you could push the button and cross.
Right.
I think there was one on, like between 6th and 7th on West or East Highway 3. And then I think there was another one.
11th Avenue.
Yeah. So they used to have those, like for going, and that was more the route, wouldn't like kids would walk to school, sort of the same route that like the bus would take.
Yep, yep.
Too. But, but it's interesting, what goes around, comes around.
And it is. And we're talking highways, though, so the DOT's gonna have to be involved.
Yeah.
Don't they make a solar flashing?
Oh, absolutely.
Crosswalk sign?
They do. They, they make some of those. They make a lot of different scenarios out there for us to look at.
So who's responsible for that sign? The DOT or us?
Uh, that, no, it's not us. I believe on that, it's on the main line. So that's probably County Conservation. I know they've had a couple damaged over the years on that main line, and they've handled the replacement. And then if it's on the spurs, we handle it. But anyway, just to get thoughts flowing.
Thanks, Doug.
Good idea.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, you know, there was that walking study, that extension, there was a grant they got. And that was more specific to schools, walking to and from schools. But I don't know if there's something talked to extension. Maybe there's some other kind of a program that would take a look at like going to parks as opposed to just maybe the schools. And there might be some information from that walking study. And in fact, that's where the bike lane came out of.
There should be.
That's on federal, but there might be more information there that they hadn't really brought forward to make a recommendation on. So I think I would suggest definitely reviewing that study because there might be something in there that can help us just be a little further ahead.
The walk study that I was on, we went from the extension office out to the hospital to access the wellness center and, and the hospital, of course. And we, we went both ways. We, we got on the bike path and walked out there. And then we also walked back along the highway, which is treacherous. But, yeah, I think there is some information you could pull from that because our main thing was we need more signage getting people to the bike path. If you don't know it's there, you're gonna try walking along the highway there. So there might be something there, Jim.
Yeah. They got called away to Harriman's for that, for the bike path, so.
Because there's no sidewalks at all, the Harriman's Park. Because there's no sidewalks at all, the Harriman's part.
So, we'll, hopefully, we can find something on that, be great. All right. Anything else on the bikes? Now, we'll move to our other items. Uh, this cost estimate for blight assessment update. Mr. Dunn, did you have information on that?
So, it's been brought up a couple of times at workshops to look into updating our blight assessment, and, uh, the, I got a proposal from the company that did the last one, um, and to do an update. And, uh, they basically said it would be two days of field work for two individuals. And then, the, they would, uh, follow the onsite work with research and data collection, and then draft the report. They expect the blight estimate, blight assessment portion of the work to take two to four months. The cost estimate is 6,500. I think when we did this in 2019, it was $5,000, so it's gone up, just like everything else. And I don't know that it's, I don't, I don't think it's any less work doing an update than it does doing the original one, because you still have to, uh, drive around and look at every property. And this only focuses on residential as well, so, um, so, just wanted to get that in front of you. Yes?
I'd just like to see us talk about that during budget time.
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, we didn't budget for it, so...
I'm going to add one, as I was thinking, got the Ron's email. Uh, the one thing, I think it was about 2019 when we did the last blight assessment, you know? And, and do one now, it's six years. Why don't we wait 10 years? Do a 10-year span and see what, and because we're making progress on our blight, um, we could use that other money, that 50, 60, 55, $6,500 for our blight properties. You know, just something to think, just think about when you're putting it together.
What, what I would like to see is, I do have a copy of the blight study, and I, I would like us to be able to go through that and see what we have cleared up, what we have cleaned up, what, what progress we have made. Let's see where we are before we order another study. And I do agree with the, let's do one every 10 years, just to kind of keep us on track and see what kind of progress we're making.
It's a measuring, measuring stick, you know? If we do it incrementally, at least we'll know we're making, making progress. I think we are. I mean, I think we are.
I think you need to take a ride with me, Steve.
Yeah, well...
Because I don't think we're making any progress.
Oh, we are, we're, we've done a ton of stuff, and, and, and probably pick, pick more than you, me and I, you and I, Barry. But, uh, yeah, we, we've made some big strides, and we got a lot of stuff to do. But you can't do it, you need, it takes money, takes time, and it takes people, so...
Well, we're spending 600, 700,000 on a building. We don't know what the status of that is, so 6,500 is a spit in the ocean.
We got that dump in our lap, Barry. That's a, that's a nominal anomaly, so let's, uh, let's see what we're actually working on, so... Go ahead.
I did drive out and look at the trailer park today. It looks a hell of a lot better than these pictures.
Yes, I'm looking at it now. It's on the website, it's on the city's website. And I think it would be good, I agree with you, Jerry, like, to take a look at the current one, and I guess just see exactly, uh, what is in that, and then maybe what more do we need in addition to that.
There you go. Thank you.
I'm not against an update, but I think let's take a look at the one we have, too, and, and maybe give some recommendations to the company if we go with them. You know, we're looking maybe more for this area, because some of this information, yeah, but anyway, go ahead.
I mean, if you want to talk during budget time, we can, we can do that.
Yeah. I don't have anything else. We can adjourn this working workshop. Thank you, everybody.
Everybody take a cookie.
Cookies.
Or two, or three.
Where'd Robin go?